Welcome to this Monday, April 8th Board of Education meeting. I declare a quorum of board members are present and that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 18th, 2024?
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'd like to make a motion to amend the meeting minutes to amend item 10E from the minutes. I emailed Lacy about this, but the 10E was a motion by Michael Ramsey. No second required. The board voted unanimously to approve the allocation formulas as presented. We accidentally had the 2023-2024 allocations that should say 2024-2025. So do I have a second on my motion to amend? Okay, let's vote on the amendment. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the amendment's approved. Now we'll move to the main motion to approve the minutes. All, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting minutes are approved. The next agenda item is to enter into executive session for the stated purpose of discussion of release of teachers from employment contracts and/or appointment of administrators as needed and three student expulsion appeals. Do we have a motion to enter into executive session for those stated purposes?
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in executive session.
Motion to enter into regular session?
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I will state for the record, no action was taken in executive session. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We are now back in regular session. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance. Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Pledge allegiance.
All right, the amendment's approved. Now we'll move to the main motion to approve the minutes.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands,
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please respond by saying aye.
one nation, under God, indivisible,
Aye. The meeting minutes are approved.
with liberty and justice for all.
The next agenda item is to enter into executive session for the stated purpose of discussion of release Thank you. The next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Dixon, you are recognized. of teachers from employment contracts and/or appointment of administrators as needed, and three student expulsion appeals. Do we have a motion to enter into executive session
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board Chair McQuillan, members of the board,
for those stated purposes?
Make the motion.
Second.
and the fine citizens of Berkeley County.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Welcome back, and I hope our admin, our teachers, staff, and students
Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
are well-rested and rejuvenated after a wonderful spring break.
We are now in executive session.
We are on the final stretch of the school year, and there's an undeniable buzz of excitement in the air. This is a time when we not only celebrate the imminent graduations of our seniors, but also gear up to finish the academic year strong. It's a testament to the dedication and hard work of everyone in our educational community that we've reached this point with such momentum. As we delve into this crucial period, let's keep the spirit of enthusiasm alive and channel it into our efforts to support our students in every possible way. Let's continue to inspire and motivate them to strive for excellence, both in their academic pursuits and personal growth. I want to express my heartfelt appreciation for the tireless commitment of our teachers, our administrators, and our staff. Your dedication to our students' success is truly commendable and is what makes a positive difference in our district. Also now, I want to recognize- Also, now, I want to recognize Casey Giddens, our District Teacher of the Year and our Teacher Forum representative, for her presence this evening. So, welcome and thank you for your commitment. Yes, we always have. After a full day in the classroom, welcoming back spring break enthused students, you coming this evening is greatly appreciated. Thank you so much. And so, speaking of teachers, the Friday before spring break was a special day for Berkeley County School District's 48 educators selected as Teacher of the Year at their schools. A special ceremony was held at Freedom Church to induct each of them into BCSD's teacher forum. In addition, the top three finalists for District Teacher of the Year were named at the event. Would like to send the congratulations to Rebecca Crossky, Kane Bay Middle School, Stormy Walker, Hanahan Middle School, and William S. Chassero from Berkeley High School. BCSD will name the District Teacher of the Year at an annual Teacher of the Year breakfast organized by the Berkeley County Chamber of Commerce at Trident Technical College. So, congratulations, teachers. Some more exciting news. For the second year in a row, a Berkeley County School District student will represent the Low Country of South Carolina in the Scribs National Spelling Bee. Kate Engel, an eighth grader at Daniel Island School, won the Spellbound Bee where she faced spellers from Charleston, Colliton, and Dorchester Counties. The winning word was Zabulac- Zepucrola. May I have the definition, please? Relating to tomb or interment. The national- I practiced it over and over again, too, and I knew it was going to happen. Nope. The nationally televised Scribs Bee will begin with preliminary rounds on May 28th, with final competition slated for Thursday, May 30th. And I will go visit Kate to get the correct pronunciation of that word. This bee is held each year in Washington, DC, and includes educational workshops, historic excursions, and other special events. So, congratulations and good luck to Kate. Stratford High School School Improvement Council has been named one of the five statewide 2024 award finalists for its accomplishments in parent and civic engagement within the school community. The School Improvement Council's annual Dick and Tonkey Riley Award for School Improvement Council Excellence was created in 2002 to recognize the significance contributions made to public education by more than 11,000 local School Improvement Council members who volunteer in states, the state's 1,100-plus K-12 public schools. So, good luck to the Knights. Hanahan High School's JRTC program, student and production team were recently recognized for their success. Hanahan's JRTC program, led by Colonel Sergeant Major Ronaldo Jordan and Lieutenant Colonel Yolanda Ellerby, has a very active group of student cadets who go above and beyond to be leaders at their schools and make a positive difference in the entire Hanahan community. Representative Nancy Mace presented certificates of recognition to the instructors and the JRTC Hawk Battalion for creating a program that emphasizes citizenship, character, and leadership development, and community service, and for exemplifying both integrity and personal accountability. So, congratulations to these Hawks. Hanahan High's weekly news program, known as Hawks Eye View, was named the 2023 Best Newscast in the Southeast by the National Academy for Screen Arts and Sciences in the Academy's Student Production Award Group. This is the same governing entity over the annual Emmy Awards. So, congrats to instructor Jerry Hines and his students for this accomplishment. More information, including the names of all the students who worked on the news shows, is available on our website. Berkeley currently has two schools identified for having an unsatisfactory rating on the 2023 School Report Card. These two schools have participated in the Continuous Improvement Process Model, and they developed turnaround plans that were presented and approved by the local school board on January 22nd, 2024. We will share a detailed quarterly update with the board on the progress each school is making. Our district staff continue to work with the school leadership in partnership to focus on strategies towards these goals and use school-level data to inform their actions. New student registration for the 2024-2025 school year in Berkeley County School District will open on April 10th at 10:00 a.m. BCSD's registration process is web-based for all aspects of student registration, including document upload. Those without the ability to register online will need to contact school for each for which they are zoned to arrange a date and time to register in person. And parents and guardians will be able to visit bcsschools.net backslash or forward slash registration on April 10th at 10:00 a.m. to begin the process. Let's remember to support and uplift one another, knowing that together we can overcome any challenge and achieve remarkable success. Thank you all for your unwavering dedication to our school community.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon. The next agenda item is citizens' comments. In order to conduct the meeting in an orderly and efficient manner, we ask that you honor the following guidelines. Stakeholder comments are welcomed and encouraged. However, the board will not take immediate action on public comments at this meeting. Any person wishing to address the board must register prior to the meeting. Comments must be regarding programs, policies, or procedures. Comments regarding complaints against employees other than district-level executives or references to students other than the child of the speaker will not be heard in public session. Groups addressing the same topic should select one speaker. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The board chair reserves the right to allot additional time or halt public comments that do not adhere to these guidelines. The first speaker this evening is Kathleen Lowe on the topic of attracting and retaining teachers in BCSD. Welcome, Ms. Lowe.
Good evening. I'm Kat Lowe. I'm the Berkeley County Education Association President, and I teach over at Hanane High School. I hope everyone had a great day, looking at the eclipse, not directly at it. As a reminder to everyone, it's unsafe to look at the sun every day. Don't look at the sun every day. If you keep that in mind, when the eclipse comes, you don't have to ask about it. Don't look at the sun. But what I really want to talk about is our plan to attack, to attract and retain the teachers that we need to be the best that we can be. And so, I'm going to give you a saying that we say in Cleveland. It's called, "Everybody wants to go to heaven, but nobody wants to die to do it." What that means is, I think we all have the same goals. We want to hold on to the teachers that we already have, and we want to attract new teachers to come in. And I know that we are all on the same page with this, but I'm going to ask that we keep in mind that sacrifices are going to be needed to do this because we really are in a crisis. We are short 158 teachers right now. That's what we are advertising for. I'll tell you, today was really tough because the high schools are short eight science teachers. That means that we were running around all day trying to make a great day happen for the kids. It is tough to plan and make those moments happen for them. You know, so today you're going to be talking about teacher raises, and they're always appreciated. And you're going to look at a 3% increase, I believe, and that's appreciated. But you got to remember, inflation was 3% this year. So, for teachers, that may or may not really look like a raise. And if the goal is to retain, the metric is holding on to teachers, not whether or not a raise happened. We always appreciate the extra help, but the goal is to attract and retain. On the same document, it talks about stipending teachers for all the extra work they do. Guys, some of those stipends have been the same since 2008. So, you have to think about, like, what do we want here? Do we want people running Beta Club? Do we want people to be teacher mentors? What do we want? Sacrifice needs to happen. We all want to go to heaven, but we don't want to die to do it. You know, other things I'm going to let you know is that contract is due in 32 days. 32 days is signing date for the teachers, May 10th. And that contract hasn't changed. It costs $0 to make that contract more transparent, to tell teachers exactly how many years' experience they have on that contract, tells them where they're going to be on that scale, and every year it falls through the cracks and mistakes get made, and the pay doesn't come out right, and we don't find out until it's a problem. You can fix it by being more transparent. You can tell teachers what the benefits are between district and state. That's transparent, right? Why didn't teachers get the parent leave? We had to do a whole thing last year to do it. Tell us what the classroom ratios are supposed to be, as opposed to us always coming to you and telling you that our classrooms are overfilled. Call the numbers out. Guys, we all want to go to heaven, but you might not want to die to do it. I really appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Carrie Henson on Right to Read Day. Welcome, Ms. Henson.
Honorable school board members, my name is Carrie Henson, a resident of Goose Creek and a grandmother to two young children on the cusp of their educational journey. Today, on Right to Read Day, I stand before you to address a pressing concern that affects not only my grandchildren, but every child in our community. In recent years, we've witnessed a troubling rise in censorship attempts within our schools and public libraries. The American Library Association reported a staggering 4,240 book challenges in 2023, marking a significant increase from the previous year. These challenges, often driven by organized groups such as Moms for Liberty, have sought to remove books they unilaterally deem inappropriate, bypassing the right of individuals to make informed choices about their reading. Alarmingly, this wave of censorship has disproportionately targeted literature by and about LGBTQIA+ individuals and people of color, eroding the diversity of perspectives that is the bedrock of our society. Reading is not merely a skill, but a gateway to the broader human experience, essential for learning and the exercise of our democratic freedoms. I advocate for a future where my grandchildren and all children can explore the vast array of human stories and ideas. They deserve to learn about our world in all its complexity, to see themselves in the narratives they encounter, and to develop empathy and understanding for those who may appear different. Books are not just tools for education. They are mirrors and windows into the lives of others. Curtailing access to these resources does not shield our youth. It hinders their ability to navigate and appreciate the rich tapestry of human life. While parents have the sovereign right to guide their children's reading, this right does not extend to making decisions for the entire community. It is imperative that the literary choices available to our children are not constrained by the preferences of a select few. The act of removing or banning books from our school libraries sets a dangerous precedent, one that edges us closer to the realm of government censorship and undermines our steadfast commitment to freedom of expression. I implore you to stand against any measures that seek to ban books. Instead, let us empower parents and individuals with the autonomy to choose their reading materials in accordance with their personal beliefs and values. Your consideration of my appeal today is not just about books. It's about defending our fundamental liberties. Let us not allow censorship to eclipse the light of knowledge and freedom that reading brings. Thank you for your attention and for considering my perspective on this critical issue.
Thank you. The next agenda item is any action as required from executive session, and we will start with the student expulsion appeals. Do we have a motion in the matter of student number one?
Mr. Chair, in the matter of student number one, I move that we deny the appeal.
Second.
We have a motion and a lot of seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appeal, expulsion appeal of student number one is denied. Do we have a motion in the matter of student number two?
Mr. Chairman, I made the motion to grant the appeal and to make the motion that the student returns to school on strict probation.
Second.
We have a motion to grant the appeal of student number two and allow the child to return to the home school on strict probation. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. In the matter of student number three, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, in the matter of student number three, I move that we deny the appeal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal of student number three. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Walfer.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the personnel recommendations of the administration as discussed in executive session for the current school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. This time, I move to accept the recommendation of the administration to name Ms. Colleen Martin as the coordinator of special services with the contract to begin July 15th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. You good on the picture? All right. All right. The next agenda item is temporary committee assignments. If a quorum of a committee is not present, we are good on the committee front. So, we will now recess for committee meetings, and then we'll return to regular session. The first committee meeting is the Committee on Academics and Innovation. Ms. Littleton, you are recognized.
I'm calling the Committee on Academics and Innovation to order. I declare there's a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes two to zero. The first agenda item is Head Start Budget Expenditure Report for February 2024, Head Start Credit Report for February 2024, Pre-K On My Way Curriculum, and 2024-2025 Head Start Calendars. Let's pleasure the committee.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes two to zero. The second agenda item is the School Renewal Plans for Spring of 2024. Dr. Gilman, you are recognized.
Thank you. Good evening, Committee Chair, Ms. Littleton, Superintendent Dixon, Board Chairman McQuillan, and board members. Thank you so much for allowing us to talk with you tonight. District Strategic Plans and School Renewal Plans are required by the South Carolina State Board of Education, Regulation 43-261, SE Code 59-181300. The plans are developed every five years and are updated annually within the five-year initial cycle. This year, we are in the fourth year of our five-year planning cycle due to a gap year because of COVID-19. The plans can be edited at any time throughout the school year and are working living documents for all stakeholders. Here are some helpful points to consider when reviewing the district school, the district and school renewal plans. Plans are a visionary roadmap for the district and the schools. It's an improvement model that is in place that supports continuous improvement that the district and schools use to monitor progress for their programs, practices, and procedures to ensure students learn and receive the resources they need in our schools. Goal areas include student achievement, teacher administrative quality, and school climate. The district and schools are required to have at least one goal in each of these three areas. Our district and school goes seamlessly, work seamlessly to ensure that the State Department and districts' priorities are embedded in the school's goals, strategies, and action steps. The school renewal plans should be completed in collaboration with the school community stakeholders and should include members of the School Improvement Council, Title I Planning Team, and any other advisory groups for the school. Schools keep documentation at the school level to show how they have included these organizations. And these assessments should identify the strengths and weaknesses of the district school, district and school. However, the areas showing the most need should be included in the district and school plans. Schools need to ensure that their goals and strategies from other school plans are woven into their strategic plan. Plans must be submitted annually to the South Carolina State Department of Education by April 30th and can be revised throughout the school year. Due to COVID-19, district and school plans were submit, excuse me, submitted in 2020 because this was designated as a gap year. They were not submitted in the gap year. District and school projected funding budget should be aligned to strategic and school goals, and all strategic and school renewal plans should be the foundation for all other required plans by the district and by school levels. Over the next two weeks, we invite you to review the plans and provide any feedback on these plans. We will share the information with the district and school teams as needed as we receive it from you. When reviewing the plans, please log into your Google account and click on the link that was shared with you. The link will take you to the district strategic plan and school renewal plans. All plans are in draft mode until approved during the last Berkeley County School Board meeting on April the 22nd. All plans have been conveniently linked for you in one document, along with a feedback form to provide feedback as needed. After April 22nd, the board meeting on April 22nd, all plans will be approved by the board and submitted to the State Department of Education. all plans will be approved by the board and submitted to the State Department of Education. The State Department typically provides their feedback by August. Schools have until September 30 to make any revisions required by the State Department of Education. If you have any questions, please contact me or Ms. Sharon Snyder as we are working closely on the school renewal plans. This is for your information. After we receive the information from you and your feedback, we will present them to you again for approval on the 22.
Thank you. Our third agenda item is the textbook adoption selections spring 2024. Dr. Gilman, you are again recognized.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Committee Chair Littleton, Superintendent Dixon, Chair Mr. McQuillan, and Board Members. On Tuesday, December 2, 2023, the South Carolina Department of Education approved funding for multiple instructional material adoptions. The Academics and Innovation Division then organized Berkeley County School District Committees of teachers selected by their principals to review new options available from the State Department. After a thorough examination to ensure alignment with the standards and instructional models, each school submitted a vote for their selection. Currently, the textbooks in use are from a previous adoption. According to school board policy IFAA, the adoption of textbooks in the Berkeley County School District will be made by committees composed of classroom teachers, subject area coordinators, directors based on the recommendation of the district's principals. The adoption process was supervised by the Director of Curriculum, Ms. Jean Crowley, as well as myself, the Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. The board must approve all textbooks. We bring to you for consideration the following textbooks from the South Carolina Department of Education approved textbook list for a first committee reading. And the textbooks are here for everyone's viewing and there are cards for you to, when you review, if you have any questions or if you have any suggestions, please fill those out, and we will work with you on those. For English Laminas Arts, we have ELA Handwriting in grades two and three. We have ELA grades K5, ELA grades 6, 8, English 1, English 2, English 3, and English 4, Advanced Placement English Literature and Composition, Advanced Placement Language and Composition. For science, we have Advanced Placement Chemistry, Advanced Placement Physics 1 and 2, Chemistry 1 and 2, Physics 1 and 2. For Social Studies, we have Advanced Placement World History. For CTE, we have Accounting 1 and 2, Animal Science, Advanced Personal Finance, Baking and Pastry, Fundamentals of Web Page Design and Development, Introduction to Culinary Arts, Introduction to Veterinary Science, Middle School Exploratory Introductions to Career Clusters, Mechatronics 1, 2, 3, and 4, Personal Finance, which is a .5 credit, Small Animal Care, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, Sports Medicine 1 and 2, Welding 1, 2, 3, and 4. The Division of Academics and Innovation is recommending for your approval for the first committee reading tonight of the textbooks that we presented to them.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the committee?
Move to approve the first reading of the school-selected textbooks, which are supported by the South Carolina Department of Education.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a quick question, Dr. Gilman. You talked about handwriting. What grade level was that?
Second and third. Are you excited to see handwriting coming back?
Yes, ma'am. Wish it was cursive, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Say it should be all the way up. Give us some middle school handwriting books, too.
That's true.
You'll scare them if you start it now. Any discussion besides that? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Dr. Gilman.
Yes, ma'am.
The fourth agenda item is Berkeley County School District's 2024-2025 Local Board Approved and Innovative Courses. Thank you. Dr. Gilman, you are again recognized.
I was like, oh, did I leave that off? Good evening, everyone, again. Thank you so much for working with me tonight. The Berkeley County School District Local Board Approval Process allows schools to be innovative in offering locally-designed courses, LBA, to best meet the needs of our students. These courses are in addition to courses that can be found in the state activity coding system. LBA courses go through an application process, committee review with the Division of Academics and Innovation, and instruction before coming for your approval. Over the past few months, curriculum coordinators, classroom teachers, administrators, instructional coaches have updated the LBA course syllabi and pacing guides to meet the needs of our diverse student population and to ensure that the appropriate content, instructional strategies, and pacing guides are being used in our classrooms. This evening, we are presenting nine new or revised LBA courses. At the elementary school level, we have STEM Exploratory for grades five, STEM Exploratory for grade six, and Unified PE for grade six. For the middle school, we have three courses: STEM Elementary for grade seven, STEM Elementary for grade eight, and Unified PE for grades seven and eight. In high school, we have three courses: Grammar for Language and Writing, Languages and Writing, South Carolina History, and Unified Art. Our STEM Exploratory courses are not new to the district but have been separated by grade level instead of by grade bands. Unified PE has also been used in the district but will now be separated by grade levels also. In the high school courses, Grammar for Languages and Writing was updated from a previous course that was just grammar to include more writing instruction. South Carolina History is a new elective course where students will explore the rich and diverse history of South Carolina from its earliest inhabitants to the present day. An emphasis will be placed on developing historical thinking skills, promoting civic engagement, and fostering an appreciation for South Carolina's past. Unified Art has been added to empower a diverse group of students of all ages and abilities to promote their artistic skills and increase their opportunities for inclusion. The Division of Academics and Innovation is recommending for your approval of the local board-approved courses for the 2024-2025 school year as presented tonight.
Thank you. Pleasure of the committee?
Move to approve the proposed 2024-2025 Local Board Approved and Innovative Courses as provided.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a quick question again.
Yes, ma'am.
When you talk about these STEM exploration courses, all the courses you mentioned, how are we going to get them taught? Will it be virtual? Will it be in a classroom setting?
We're certainly hoping that it will be in the classroom setting. But...
Because I'm afraid all these courses with our teacher numbers shortage, I'm not sure how we are going to do that. I see Dr. Dixon picking up.
Well, if we do not...
Some of those...
I'm sorry, Dr. Dixon. I apologize. No, I was going to say, of course, if the classes don't make, we will not offer them.
Right. Will they be offered in the same as the title you gave us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So STEM would be a part of the sciences or the CTE band?
That's all encompass science, technology, engineering, and math. It would encompass all of that.
Okay. So if I'm a general science teacher, I can teach the STEM exploration?
That's an elementary course.
That's a what?
That was elementary, correct?
Yeah, well, that is elementary, middle...
It depends on my certification as well.
So elementary cert.
But these are exploratory classes. They're not classes. These would be taught during related arts.
Okay. Got you.
Not during the core.
Okay. Got you. That's the same thing for the high school as well?
The high school, we did not have any STEM courses for the high school.
Okay. So you mentioned the grammar in high school.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned South Carolina History.
Yes, ma'am.
And the Unified... I want to say that's art, I think.
Yes, ma'am, Unified Art.
So those would be taught during the related arts period as well?
In high school, they take elective courses. So they can count as their elective courses, or South Carolina History may count as an elective course as well. So all of those are elective courses.
Okay. Got you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Gilman.
Tell you quick and sweet.
Thank you, Dr. Gilman. I promised last time. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. It is approved, two to zero. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this committee meeting.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes two to zero.
Mr. Ramsey.
I'm calling the Committee on Finance and Human Resources to order. I declare there is a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved. I voted two to zero. The first agenda item is out-of-state travel. Ms. Marcy Aberson, you are recognized.
Good evening, Committee Chairman Ramsey, Board Chairman McQuillan, Board Members, and Superintendent Dixon. Tonight, administration is requesting the approval of out-of-state travel as presented.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the out-of-state travel as presented by administration.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved. I voted two to zero. The second agenda item is RFP 704-23-24, District-Wide Facility Scheduling and Management Software. Ms. Aberson, you are recognized again.
I would like to invite Ms. Lisa Ackerman, our Director of Procurement, to the podium to present this item.
Good evening, Chairman McQuillan, members of the board, Dr. Dixon. The item that we present to you this evening is a district-wide facility scheduling and management software. It is a hosted platform for the rental of district facilities. Currently, we are using an in-house devised system, if you will. This system will give us much more power, flexibility, quicker. This is a hosted platform, as I mentioned. They will... They being Facilitron, who is who we are asking to be awarded to this evening, will actually manage the software on behalf of the district. The payment for the system is a percentage of revenue. They will fund the district, send in a check, or they will send the revenue to us monthly by the 20th of each month, and they will keep their percentage, which is a 10% fee for use of their system and for them to train, monitor, and all of that on behalf of the district.
I have a question. A lot of nonprofits, municipalities, and all that use our facilities, and they're not particularly maybe paying a fee. There's different times. There's different fees. A good example is the middle school in St. Stephen works with the town so that the town can have a basketball league. And without them being able to use the gym, there's no basketball league in St. Stephen. So in that scenario, is there a payment? And what happens to this revenue if there's no revenue to give? Does that make sense?
The system is extremely versatile and extremely powerful. The basic parameters will be set, but from a practice standpoint, what we have done in the past, that will be how we initially set up the system from a parameter standpoint. So if there is no fee for a facility, I can't answer the question on whether or not they will charge for... They will not charge. But the payment, the 10% for the district, I'm assuming they will still charge that fee to us. Correct?
The district, if we don't have enough fees, the minimum, I believe, would be $10,000. That's how much the software agreement... So out of all our leasing and renting to everyone, I think my understanding is we'd have to get... They'd have to get 10% of that. It should equal $10,000 or greater. But if they didn't get $10,000, then we would have to pay the difference. So my point with that is if we have situations where we're helping a community out and they don't need to be charged, we should be able to work with that from my understanding.
Yes. And we can... So I think in what you're asking, in the policy manual for, like, facility usage by, you know, outside community agencies, there's set, like, levels of payment, like if it's a nonprofit, if it's a community organization. And so there's levels of fees ranging from no cost to, like, another minimum cost. So we'll be able to set this system up, like, give to the software developers to include all of those parameters. So when they finish the application, it will say, you know, what your fee would be if there would be or if it was waived.
So software always makes me nervous. And you said it's a hosted solution. So the contract for this hosted solution, have we reviewed those terms from, like, an IT... I'm looking for someone else. Diane or someone from an IT perspective?
Yes, ma'am. We had representation from IT on the review panel. So they actually reviewed the response from the vendor.
Okay. And is it a separate contract that we're entering into with, like, separate terms and conditions for software?
The contract that we'll enter into is our solicitation that we wrote with our terms and conditions. So we've already reviewed those on the front end.
Okay. Thank you.
Those conditions are always board policy of telling people that you've got to do this if this happens?
Those policies, those parameters, will be set up in the software by the district project leads. So they won't set the software up in violation of board policy.
Because then hypothetically, it can't not be occurring that one school is a nice guy and lets everybody free. The other school kicks their tail?
Right.
It's going to be consistent?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the award of RFP 704-23-24 for a district-wide facility scheduling and management software to Facilitron Incorporated for an estimated value of $10,000 for an additional one-year term with the option to renew for four additional one-year terms for a potential contract value of $50,000.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any more discussion? And just as far as I know, you've had a ton of experience in procurement and other areas. Is this a similar software that you've... Have you utilized this kind of software to handle these kind of situations or is it something new?
No, I have not. But this company is very experienced. And when I say the system is extremely powerful, but it's customer-oriented, where you can set up all these different parameters, it is a strong software company. They are strong in the school district business across the United States. So we are not going to be their first rodeo. They are very, very experienced, and we're very comfortable.
And Ms. Driggers and her team have thoroughly reviewed it and been working with, you know, to make sure.
All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Hold on a second. We'll set up our own parameters. There's no, like, fee that could come up for them setting up our parameters. We're setting up our own.
Well, setup is included in the cost of the software.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Sorry. Michael, I will not interrupt you again.
All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved. I vote of two to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The third agenda item is FY 2324, General Fund Budget Amendment. Ms. Aberson, you are recognized again.
Thank you. We are very pleased to present our updated revenue numbers from the state and the revised projections from the local revenues for the last few months of the current fiscal year. The... I just want to put the precursor on there that the local revenues are based on historical information. The state is based on hard numbers. The overall changes result in a budget increase of $6,867,490. And if you'll look on... Sorry, I forgot to bring up the PowerPoint.
This is not the money the Secretary of State kind of lost, right? Okay.
So if you look at our original FY 2324 budget, you see our total revenues were $418,2923. With our projected final revenues are $424,870,413, which shows that increase of 6.0. which shows that increase of 6.8 million. The primary funding sources that increased were the two at the bottom, the education funding for GF and EIA. Those alone were about $5 million. When you break this down on the expenditure side, our salaries and benefits of our approved budget was again the $418 million. We added some expenses because we approved those incentives last year. So that increased our budgeted expenses to $429,902,300. That gave us a fund balance designation of 11.9 million. And again, that was from the September and the December incentives that were approved by the board. Our recommendation is to apply this general fund amendment of the 6.8 million towards that fund balance designation to reduce it to $5 million. Any discussion?
So essentially, if you're going through all the other budget items, this is going to set us kind of even keel and then there will be additional request to designate other fund bal, more fund balance. But this just puts us where we know where we're starting from and then these other motions would be fund balance designations.
Yes, ma'am, the other items we'll present tonight will be designated from fund balance and we'll give you a revised fund balance designation at the end of the, the second item.
Mr. Chair, I move to increase the projected revenue for fiscal year 2324 by $6,867,490. This amendment will reduce the fund balance designation of 11.9 million to $5,32,510.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved, I voted two, two zero. The fourth agenda item is the Proposed Employee Pay Incentive Effective April the 15th, 2024. Ms. Aberson, you are recognized again.
Thank you. Okay, this is just a recap as shown in the previous item is our 2324 budget amendment that we presented, which reduced the district's 11.9 million designated from fund balance to $5 million. In lieu of giving an additional one-time incentive, Administration is recommending that we proceed with giving all employees a three percent pay increase effective April 15th, 2024. The state constitution prohibits us from giving a retroactive increase, so we are recommending a pay increase for the next pay cycle that begins on April 15th. The cost to fund this increase from April fif, from the April 15th effective date through June 30th, 2024 will be $1,934,639. This does increase the FY 2324 fund balance designation to $6,967,149. However, this is still less than the 11.9 million fund balance designation previously approved by the board for the current fiscal year and gives employees an early increase for the FY 2425 fiscal year that Administration feels is sustainable with our current budget projections for next year. Of course, we continue to monitor budget projections for the upcoming year with the hope we will, we will be able to recommend another pay increase effective July 1st along with the annual step increase for all eligible employees. I have provided, just for information purposes, kind of what this would, what the teacher salary schedule would look like, showing the current teacher salary schedule and what it will look like with the three percent increase. As you can see, this definitely helps us get our first-year teacher salary closer to the goal of 50,000 before 2026. This three percent increase will be applied to all salary schedules, however, not just the teacher salary schedule. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I move to designate the use of $1,934,639 in fund balance to provide a three percent pay increase to all employees effective April 15th, 2024 with a May 15th, 2024 pay date.
Second, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Generally, I would be very opposed to pay raises coming out of fund balance designation, but we're continuing to see revenues come in. We think this is long-term sustainable and next year's revenues and this is just the first step in what the 2024, 2025 pay increases, I believe, will be. So I, I just don't want people to think, well, we got three percent and that's all we're getting for next year. It's a three percent starting now.
Correct.
And we're stretching to bring that out of the fund balance because we're going to plan that into next year, so.
So we're looking at it, more pay raise in July is the point.
Yes, but, but we're doing it now and taking some money out of the fund balance because we want people to see how dedicated we are to, even if it's a small step, taking a step and we're going to take another step, which we have, you know, continued to do. But I have adamantly been against pay raises out of fund balance in the past. And so I wanted to say why I am not, why I'm in favor of this. We are dedicated to, to recruiting and retaining teachers and we're going to continue to come up with ways and ideas and, and dedicate our money to, to retaining and recruiting excellent employees.
All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion is approved. Excuse me, but I voted two to zero. The fifth agenda item is the Proposed Child Nutrition Pay Increase Effective April the 15th, 2024. Ms. Aberson, you are recognized again.
Thank you. In our efforts to continue to maintain competitive pay for all employees, Administration is requesting an increase to the child nutrition pay schedules since these salaries were not increased at the beginning of current, of the current fiscal year. The last increase of $1 per hour was approved in fiscal year 2223. However, we are now asking to increase the salary schedule for child nutrition by 12.5%. This will achieve an overall starting salary of $15 per hour for child nutrition staff to align with the other salary schedules updated over the last two years, which would be the custodial and the bus driver salaries. The only salary that will be below the $15 per hour after this update will be the operator apprentice position. These employees are receiving on-the-job training while working on their GED. Once they complete their training and successfully pass the GED, they will be moved to an operator position and receive the $15 per hour starting pay. This change allows child nutrition to compete with the average starting salary at fast food restaurants and grocery store deli bakeries. It is important to note that this will be fully funded from child nutrition funds. It will have no impact on the general fund budget. Are there any questions?
What's the operator apprentice program you're referring to? And not answering the telephone, but operating one of the machines?
Yes, ma'am, at the cash registers at the, at the school level. And they're learning that and they're being paid on the job and training on the job while they earn their GED. And then once they earn their GED, they're moved to operator instead of operator apprentice. And we actually have had some discussions about wanting to start this program for our bus drivers and custodians and other folks to help them have a job where they can also work on their GED at the same time.
I move to approve the child nutrition salary increases as presented by Administration with an effective date of April 15th, 2024 and a May 15th, 2024 pay date.
Second, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Just as I mentioned a couple of years ago, $15 was the minimum pay that we wanted to have our employees here at the school district. That's currently what the county has, is someone who's worked for government service for 27 years now, it's very important. Again, that is just a minimum, that's nothing to brag about or to say like it's a good thing, but we want to continue to bring employees' pay up. This is something that is very important to this board and this administration and I think our actions continue to show that. So I just wanted to make that point of case because I remember when I first mentioned $15, people looked at me like I was silly, like it wasn't possible. Well, that's happened and I'm, I'm quite confident that we will continue to work towards this, but just wanted to throw that out there. All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved, I voted two to zero. The sixth agenda item is the Employee Salary Study Phase One. Ms. Aberson, you are recognized.
Thank you. I would like to invite Ms. Amy Fulmer, our Chief Human Resources Officer, to the podium to assist with presenting Phase One of our salary study. Our goal for Phase One is to ensure Berkeley County School District employee compensation is fair, equitable and competitive across all areas to help retain, recruit, retain and recruit highly qualified staff. I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Fulmer.
Good evening, Chair McQuinlan, Superintendent Dixon and Committee Chair Ramsey. We had an extensive salary study done, looking at all areas. This is Phase One. The proposals that I'm reading to you are the changes in the salary book. You've seen earlier the salary scales that have changed. This is a little bit different. So the salary book has been updated to include the administrative and professional salary index range. That was included in the salary book. A new specialist salary index range, a new manager salary index range and a safety and security index range has been created and these employees will be recognized and compensated for the degree that they hold. A specialist salary range was created because we had a lot of different titles and so we looked at all the different titles that we had, we looked at job descriptions and we created a salary index scale for each one of those areas based on job descriptions, job responsibilities. And again, they will be recognized for the degree that they hold. That was inconsistent throughout all of those positions. Index professional salary schedule was changed to a grade one through six. This has not changed compensation based on degrees. Where it was a bachelor's B, bachelor's A, it will now be a one, a two, a three, but all compensation will remain the same, except for the three percent that's just recently been added. All classified employees will be paid on verifiable out-of-district work experience in the area of his or her current employment with the district. Work experience verification must be in written document on letterhead and will be reviewed by human resources. This will go into effect on July 1, 2004, 2024, sorry. Employees will need to provide all documentation within eight weeks of this evening to the Chief Human Resource Officer and verification will be reviewed. The employee will be contacted by June 2024 with the years of experience that will be honored and the effect that it will be processed on July 1, 2024. New hires will be verified through the new hire process and will be granted years that are verified within eight weeks of notification of new hire. We are out of line with the other districts that are surrounding us and they are hiring people with verifiable work experience outside of a school district. This will include nurses as well. The clerical salary scale was created to have the groups align. Groups one through five on the clerical salary scale now align with groups one through five on the clerical salary schedule. We were graded A through E, except they went backwards. E being the highest, A, I mean, A being the highest, E being the lowest. We've now made sure that we're one through five and then one through five. As your number of, of group increases, so does the salary schedule. The maintenance salary scale was collapsed and recreated based off of five levels, currently had 15, to include apprentice one, apprentice two, journeyman one, journeyman two and then the fifth level is master diesel mechanic. The maintenance supervisory salary schedule is upgraded, updated to reflect a salary scale on grade one and a new index of 1.65. In the transportation salary schedule, it has been updated to change the operating officer at the lot to operating routing specialist, which is a lot title. Although you can imagine that this was a major undertaking, Phase Two will include a thorough look into the following areas. We know that we have probably missed a few and I'm expecting emails probably now and in the morning and that we will address those as they come for, come forward and we will do that during Phase Two. Yes, slip of the tongue, come for us, I heard myself say it.
Ms. Fulmer, can I ask a question really quick?
Can I give y'all what Phase Two will have so that it might, it might not? But academic supplements are going to be addressed in Phase Two. Performing arts supplements, athletic supplements, rural school mileage, child nutrition, technology, district office, moving to eight-hour school day. All salary scales will be reevaluated to have consistent step increases across all salary schedules and all years of experience. And Phase One will be continuously monitored for consistency because we are sure we have not encompassed everyone.
So I wanted to ask a question about the verification of years outside. So say for example, someone came to work for us straight out of college and they've always worked for us. It won't require anything of those folks? It will only be people who believe they have experience that would increase them on the salary scale?
Yes, so I'll use a nurse, for example. Nurses that worked outside of the retirement system, maybe they worked for a doctor's office. They worked for them for 11 years. They came to us, we granted five years of experience. They would be able to verify those years and six additional years would be granted to them so that they would be caught up to the years of experience that they would have had if we had given them 11 from the beginning.
So we're only doing extra work to get paid more?
We're going to be doing a lot of extra work.
But I mean like for employees in general, you would only be sending this verification within eight weeks of now to increase your outside experience and to move you up the pay scale.
Yes.
Like it's not going to be 5,000 people sending in paperwork. It's going to be some, some portion of our workforce who is going to get information and say, that applies to me. I worked somewhere else for whatever period of time and I'm going to send the information.
I think it will apply to almost every department but teachers because they're granted their years of experience on their certificate and we have consistently granted them based on their certificate and their years of experience, no matter where they taught, but we haven't done that to our other departments. We haven't been.
So if you're a plumber or you're an electrician or a maintenance person or, or any of those jobs, if you worked 10 years over at Santee Cooper and, well, that's not a good example, but 10 years over at somewhere and then came over here, you now would get credit for that 10 years of work?
On letterhead, verified by that current employer and then we would verify those years of experience. Not every year will be granted just based off that it will have to do with the current job that they are serving in at this time.
His responsibility is to pull this together. Is that the employee wants a raise and that's why he goes forth or she goes forth?
Yes, the employee gets the letter of verification. We will receive it, evaluate it and then let the employee know the years of experience will be granted and then we will do the action entry in human.
This doesn't affect them in the retirement system though, unless they want to buy the years back?
No, unless they buy their years back, yes. This will not affect them there.
It just moves them on the salary scale. From a, I'm going to say PR perspective, not really an internal employee PR perspective. Are we communicating this process to folks or?
We will communicate the process to folks. We have a lot of individual groups that we're going to need to communicate with beginning tomorrow, but we are going to start with individual folks that have had a change that they need to be communicated with individually.
Okay.
And also as far as you said, you will be looking at some of the stipends, considering like for the coaches and like for the band, performing arts, all the, those different activities that we have. Because I personally agree with some of the comments I've heard. It's always been my thing that we need to move those stipends up because back when I was young or even 10 years ago, coaches had to know someone to get hooked up to be a coach. Now at a lot of schools, we're begging people to come be a coach because life is so busy or things have changed. So it's a different dynamic. So it definitely would benefit our kids and like I say, especially when I look at how many hours a lot of our people that volunteer with these extracurricular activities. We really gotta, I'm glad to hear that we're looking to, to move those stipends up because some of them, you look at it, for me personally, but I would be like, well, you know, I'm putting all these hours in here and you're giving me $900. So I'm glad to hear that we're taking a look at it.
Well, and I'll tell you, we, sorry, Dr. Dixon.
I'm sorry, so, you know, even from my experience as a, you know, classroom teacher who would. who would volunteer at my time, or, you know, to sponsor a club or a, an event, and then as a principal seeing this, and then when I moved into central services, it has always been on our radar that we wanted to, like, look at and adjust, like, the academic supplements, Beta Club sponsors, you know, Lego Robotics sponsors, you know, all of those renaissance, you know, all those teams.
So much value in my personal experience.
Exactly.
And so. And the, the value is immeasurable.
Right.
As far as all those extracurricular, even like the chess, the chess coast, or like I said, the band, baseball, wrestling, all those.
And so now, we are, you know, finally at a point that we're able to have some opportunity to look at this and dre- and address it and, you know, properly make some, you know, good change there.
That sounds good.
So then, since they've talked about all those things, those jobs and titles, what will it take for, as teachers, for a contract to include the years of experience on the contract? So I'll know this year, I'm getting paid for twelve years of experience versus eleven years when I get ready to retire. You said I lost a year. There's been some concern from teachers who've, who have not gotten their correct years. I don't know how that could have happened because the State Department's really good at sending that, and it's usually printed on the certificate as well. How we can lose a year in a computer system here from the State Department?
Well, human nature sometimes has us make mistakes, and we don't certainly mean to, and we certainly correct them as soon as we can find them. Just as the State Department has made a mistake before, and we received a letter recently about a teacher that they had made a mistake before, and additional years of experience were granted, and we granted it at the date that the State Department made their change. So there are times when an accident happens, but often, teachers look at their certificates. We ensure that they are paid on that scale. It is a time that sometimes we make mistakes, but we certainly do fix them and make sure that people are paid properly.
So is it retroactive? Has it ever been?
It, depending on the date, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
So could we look at including that this year as a part of the contract?
Our contracts have already gone to legal counsel, but I can work with him on that. Or we can look at maybe keeping our contracts the way they are this school year and then do a verification of contract of years of experience that will then match the teacher salary. We can maybe work on something for this year. But it's not a secret, the teacher salary scale.
Do you know how many teachers we have in the bachelor, uh-uh, masters plus thirty?
I don't have that at hand, but I can certainly have it for you for the, probably tomorrow.
Okay. You can just shoot me a quick email. I'm just curious as to how many teachers are in that category. We don't have a lot of doctorates, but we do have a lot of masters plus thirty.
So quickly, the designation from fund balance will be to make the salary adjustments that are required from all the work we've done?
Yes, ma'am. If you have no more questions for Amy, then I'll present the budget impact of these changes. The budget impact for phase one of the salary study as presented by Ms. Fulmer will be one, one million, five hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for the current year if we enact these changes effective April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. This effective date is the start of the next scheduled pay period and will allow sufficient time for HR and finance staff to make the necessary system updates for staff to receive their revised pay on their May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four paycheck. Again, this is merely step one in an ongoing process. However, it is a fantastic start and provides improvements that are sustainable for the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I assure you, this has been a labor of love, and this committee has worked many long hours and made hard decisions to ensure we are going, we are doing what is in the best interest of our employees. Being fair and equitable, as well as increasing recruitment and retention, has been this committee's overarching goal while ensuring fiscal responsibility. If the board approves this request, it will bring the total FY twenty-three, twenty-four fund balance designation to eight million, four hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, which is still less than the eleven point nine million previously designated this fiscal year. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the designation of one million, five hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars from fund balance to complete phase one of the employee salary study as presented by administration.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any more discussion?
You said it would take, they, they have eight weeks?
For the verified work, for the, to verify their work experience.
Right. From tomorrow, eight-week time period?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that'll go into effect, and their, the increase in years will go into effect on, in July, once we verify it and get those actions entered.
Got you. Okay.
All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion is approved. I voted two to zero. Thank you all. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn this committee meeting and return to regular session.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. We have a motion. Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
This motion is approved. I voted two to zero.
Thank you, Chairman Ramsey. We are now back in regular session. The next items on the agenda are reports from standing committees, so there will be no second required on these. The first report is from Kathy Littleton, the Chair of the Committee on Academics and Innovation.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Academics and Innovation met earlier this evening, and on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the Head Start Budget Expenditure Report for February, two thousand twenty-four, Head Start Credit Report for February, two thousand twenty-four, Pre-K On My Way Curriculum, and two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Head Start Calendars.
Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Next is the Committee on Finance and Human Resources, Chairman Michael Ramsey.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Finance and Human Resources met earlier this evening, and on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the out-of-state travel as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Also, in recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the award of RFP seven oh four, twenty-three dash twenty-four for district-wide facility scheduling and management software to Facilitron Incorporated for an estimated value of ten thousand for an initial one-year term, with the option to renew for four additional one-year terms for a potential contract value of fifty thousand.
Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Also, in recommendation of the committee, I move to increase the projected revenue for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four by six million, eight hundred sixty-seven thousand, and four hundred and ninety dollars. This amendment will reduce the fund bal- balance designation of eleven million, nine hundred thousand to five million, thirty-two thousand, five hundred and ten dollars.
Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Also, in recommendation of the committee, I move to designate the use of one million, nine hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars in fund balance to provide a three percent pay increase to all employees effective April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, with a May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four pay date.
Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Also, in recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the child nutrition salary increases as presented by the administration with an effective date of April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and a May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four pay date.
Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Also, in recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the designation of one million, five hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars from fund balance to complete phase one of the employee salary study as presented by administration.
Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Ramsey. The next item on the agenda is the Board Chair update. I have limited update this evening, other than to say the next board meeting will be on Monday, April twenty-second at five thirty, and at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned.